Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
My mic working? There it is. Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
And Chairman Savoni?
Here. Counselor Marone did advise me that he had a conflict which would preclude his attendance. On to item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through H.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Fishbein. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. We will now have, oh, item four, items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. We will now have a motion to waive Rule 5.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive Rule 5 for the purposes of discussion and transfer funds for replacement fire equipment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to waive Rule 5? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is amended. Please move the item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we transfer in the amount, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $46,836 from contingency to the operating expenses account and the capital account for self-contained breathing apparatuses for the fire department.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
So waiving Rule 5 is an unusual procedure to us even though it's in our rules and usually there's some exigent circumstances, so can you please tell us what happened?
Sure. Thank you very much for allowing this opportunity. On the 24th November, we responded as a mutual aid company to the city of North Haven and fire incident in Defco Park that involved chemicals. And due to the chemical exposure to our turnout gear, we have four firefighters that basically their entire ensemble, including air packs, have to be destroyed due to an acidic atmosphere. These are not pathogens or carcinogens that can be deconed from the equipment because of the acid base of the vapor and liquid in this building fire. The gear is degraded to the point where it can't be safely used. We anticipate that either the town's insurance or other mechanisms will ultimately reimburse the majority of this funding, but because we don't have extra gear, we're using spare gear, but we're in that already, so we need to replenish these four sets of firefighter equipment. So that's what this purchase is. Again, it happened on the 24th. We have to, we need about a six-week ordering window for this to be manufactured, so we're already looking at some delay. We tried seeing what other resources we had to fund this other than coming for contingency funding, but this is, after discussions, this is the best mechanism at this time.
Thank you. I think that sums it up pretty well. Questions from the council? Counselor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, this happened in North Haven. Is there anything reimbursable from North Haven for us on this?
It's a great question. What we have is mutual aid agreements in place with all the surrounding communities, and the structure of the mutual aid agreements is such that we assume the risk when we go into the other communities, and they assume that same risk coming into ours. What we, what the whole idea, the concept is that we don't want barriers to, when we ask for help, that they come in, and it goes into the workman's comp as well as equipment loss and things like that. So this is the normal arena for mutual aid. We assume that risk.
Okay. And was this an industrial fire?
Yes, it was.
And was it just the outer wear that got damaged, or, you know, how deep was the damage?
The, it's more of a preventive type thing. When we went to the manufacturers, we used "deep" as our specialty or consultant, if you will. They looked at the chemicals involved as well as the manufacturers of each of the parts of the ensemble that the firefighters wear. They're the ones that came back with the recommendation that the chemicals would degrade their equipment such that they can't, it's not safe. So we used their expertise in that decision-making process.
Okay. And how about the hoses going into the building?
They're all getting replaced. North Haven's liability to this is upwards of a million dollars in lost equipment. So the hoses, as well as all their personal gear, everything inside the building. Our crew was the second arriving engine company, so it's not like we weren't ancillary people on scene. We were actually doing the fire attack. So we were in the building, in the exposed area. That's why we're treating it as such.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you mentioned it, Chief. We are proceeding with an insurance claim, but it'll take long.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. I have no problem with the agenda item. I just want to ask you some questions about what I see here. So I see two POs, and both have two different public bid numbers on them. Is that an open bid that we can deal with those entities at any time during the year?
Both are, yes, both are open bids. We have, one is a capital account where we bought air packs from, so that's where the bid is. By replenishing the money, we buy four air packs in every year's budget. Through attrition, we keep the, all the equipment up to date that way, so it's just logical to put the money for air packs back in the air pack capital budget. The other one is our operating line, which is where we buy all the turnout gear. So because of these, we separate the two purchases. It was a logical place to put them.
Okay. Thank you. And then a question for the mayor, I guess. Mayor, if we were to get the insurance money, what is the intent of the administration to do with that reimbursement? Where would it go?
We will look to replenish the contingency.
Okay.
On receipt of any funds.
And should that reimbursement happen after June 30th? What would be the intent of the administration?
Well, the budget will close. I mean, the books for the fiscal year will close. If they're closed at that point, they're, we wouldn't look to open the books to put the money in. Now, if the books aren't closed on that, on, at the point we receive a reimbursement, that's one thing, but otherwise it would just be reimbursement that falls into, into the reserve.
Okay. And then I guess, understanding that, Chief, is there any need in the future to have backup gear like this? You know, if we had the money, we got it after June 30th, is that something that the department would be open to? Does that make sense?
It's a perishable item, so the gear has to be replaced every 10 years. So by having extra sets, there's a cost factor too that is certainly part of our conversation. The gear that the gentlemen are in is just spare, so it's not sized necessarily for them. Each set of gear is sized to the individual. So it's okay gear, but it's not your primary. So it is something we look at. We have a cachet of it, but not totally enough. So it's certainly a concept that we bounce around every year and think about.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Excuse me. Hey, Chief, how are you?
How are you doing, Benny?
I'm good. You look good tonight. I like the whites. You look good. First things first, how are the boys?
They're doing great. Thank you.
Good. Tell them I said hey.
I will.
You know, I spent quite a few years in the hazardous waste business. Sounds strange, right? But I still have my PPE. Apparently it had an effect on me because I carry an electrical charge now. So I totally can appreciate, you know, the situation that exists. I think it's important that people just think about one thing. The fact that this material was all degraded to that effect tells you all you need to know about the need for it. That would have been a human being, and that would have been lungs, and that would have been permanent, if not fatal, damage to people. So just inherent in the request is the justification for it. So there's no question about this. And so I'm all in favor of it, obviously. I just want to let you know, I went to a dinner last week and I met Rescue Seven. For all of you, that's the crew that responded to my house when I had my little incident. So it was great meeting them. Great people, North Farms volunteers. So thanks for sharing that information with me, and meeting them all in person was, was pretty meaningful.
Great. Glad you were there to meet them.
I'm telling you, it was great. And they were pretty excited about it, too. All right. Thank you. Letting me get a little personal here. Have a good night.
Counselor Morganstein?
Good evening, Chief. Thanks. So am I to understand that right now you have some temporary or what's not custom fit to the officers that they're using?
Correct.
Okay. And you said it's going to be about six weeks for the replacement once you've ordered it?
Right.
Yeah. So again, I would, you know, stress the utmost importance of you having proper gear, and I wouldn't want to be putting your officers at risk if something's ill-fitting, and that means that, you know, they could potentially be injured, that when it comes budget time, you know, we really think about, even though it's a 10-year cycle, we want the best for their safety, of course.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council for a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. We will now go back to our regularly scheduled programming. Item five, the public question and answer period. If you could come up to the microphone and please name an address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jen Frechette, F-R-E-C-A-G-T-T-E, 29 Valley View Drive. As you know, as you're well aware, Colare is proposing to build two ginormous warehouses where the Bristol Myers Squibb property is, and I just felt it very important to say something that was left out last night. I'm not going to reiterate everything in the interest of time. But yesterday, when asked about the amount of truck traffic, Colare said they expect it 300 trucks in and 300 trucks out, yet they submitted this to planning and zoning. It clearly states that there will be 1,832 trucks from, expected from 4:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Now, their special permit is for traffic, and that area is already kind of congested at rush hour. They expect for warehouse one between 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., 64 trucks; 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., 102 trucks; 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., 64 trucks. So you kind of get the picture of what that might look like in that area. I appreciate you talking out about it, and I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention. The document that it was in looks like this when you look at the paperwork at planning and zoning. I'm not sure what it's labeled, but thank you for your time. I think if we look at Planning and Zoning Regulation 7.5 Special Permits, under B1, there are many, many reasons to reasonably oppose this project. The residents are not against building something. We know it's an industrial area, but something that is better suited to the neighborhood and isn't going to be a traffic and safety concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from public question and answer period? There being none, I close the public question and answer period, and we're going to move ahead to item eight on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wallingford, Wallingford Board of Education, and the United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 18B, The Wallingford Computer Techs, effective July 1, 18 to June 30, 2020. We have representatives from the Board of Education, and if you could please identify yourselves to the record.
Sal Mento, Superintendent?
Good evening. Danielle Bellisney, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel.
Roxanne McKay, Board of Ed chair.
Okay, so in front of us tonight, we have the IT contract. So there's currently six members in this union. This is a two-year contract, and the duration would be from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2020. So it is retroactive. In terms of the wages for the first year for 1819, the GWI increase would be 1.75%. The total cost for the first year, retroactive to July 1 of 2018, would be $6,184. For year two, 1920, the GWI was 2% increase, and that would leave us at a dollar amount of $7,216 in year two. Effective July 1 of 2019, this would go to a bi-weekly pay. We move down to the insurance. Some of the things that were changed here, all employees that were hired on or after June 30 of 2018 will be required to take the HSA plan at an employee contribution of 13% for the first year. For employees that were hired prior to June 30 of 2018, they may choose to participate in the PPO plan or the HSA plan, again, at a 13% employee contribution. Effective July 1 of 2019, the HSA plan will be the core plan for all employees, and the contribution rate would go up to 14%. Moving down, we added language to include the health reimbursement account. So this account would be made available to any actively employed employees who are precluded from participating in the health savings account because these employees receive Medicare and/or veteran benefits that otherwise disqualified them from receiving the tax advantage contributions to the HSA. In terms of the insurance waiver, that was eliminated from the contract, so that is not part of the contract moving forward. In terms of the promotions and transfers in Section 4.1, currently, if we have a present unit member who is selected either for transfer or promotion, the employee shall be moved to the new position within 75 days. That is a change from 50 days to 75 days, calendar days of the closing of the posting. We move down to the hours of work, which is Section 5.2. Here, the language that we had added into the contract was that our employees are receiving paid half-hour lunch, so we did include the wording here that they shall remain on call during that paid time in case we need to reach them and have them come back. According, in Section 5.3, if you take a look here at the opportunity for employees to come back to work, they should be given 48 hours notice if they need to return to work after the conclusion of their workday. We also put language in that if they are videotaping or need to be there for school events, either on Saturdays or Sundays or holidays, that they would be guaranteed a minimum of two hours' pay at time and a half. Let me take a look at the grievance procedure for Section 6.1. I detailed and listed here the things that are in the contract under this, the reasons why they can bring up grievance. If it's brought under Section or Reasons 2 and 3, they should only be processed up to Step 2. Step 2 of the grievance process under 6.2 is that it comes to the Assistant Superintendent to make a decision. If we move down to Step 2, 6.2, excuse me, under Step 1, one of the changes we made here was the days. So it went here from a decision to make a decision, the supervisor or the alternate shall adjust the problem or notify the employee and/or the representatives of the decision within 10 working days after the receipt of the grievance. That is a change from five days. But then if you take a look at Step 3 here in the grievance process, underneath the Superintendent of Schools or Designee, we must make a decision or have a hearing within 10 working days from the time the grievance was answered in Step 2. So the amount of days are the same. We just adjusted the time periods under Step 1 and Step 3. Moving down to personal leave. So we did put in language here for these employees to be able to take one personal day. This personal day would need to have 24 hours' notice in advance, and it would be deducted from their accumulated sick leave. Moving down to funeral leave. So in this particular section here, we added language here and specified out immediate family. We detailed out that that should include parents, stepparents, siblings, step siblings, children, stepchild, grandchildren. In addition, we added a piece at the end that if the employee needs to travel for the services, they may put in a request to the Assistant Superintendent, and they may be extended by one day for travel, depending on where the services are being held. Under Section 20.2 here, for negotiations, at this particular point when the contract was done originally, there were only three employees that were part of this union. We are now up to six, and so we increased the amount of employees that are able to attend the negotiations to two, from one to two, to represent their unit. And the last piece, while we did not get specific language addressing the Janus and changing the new language, we did want to note that Section 18.2 provides a saving clause that any provisions of the contract that are deemed to fail under the law would be invalid while the remainder of the contract would remain.
Thank you. Questions from the council? I have Counselor Chertel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's new? I'm just kidding. I have a question on, I'm reading this off my phone, so forgive me. Question on page 14 on the insurance. What else? So let's just take the in-network individual example. So we have to pick one, and 95% of the doctors and hospitals are in-network anyway. So the annual deductible is $2,000. That's not changing, which I understand. And then coinsurance is 0%, which also is not changing. So then we get to page 15, coinsurance maximum, it's saying is $3,000, but I don't know how you get to that if you have a 0% coinsurance, because basically that means that they hit their deductible, they're done. They don't, they don't pay anything else. The Anthem pays everything. Board of Ed pays everything. So right, so I think the 3,000 should be 2,000, and then it's cost share maximum. And again, we're talking in-network, so there's no balance billing. The cost share max would be the same. It would be two, they're not paying. If you're an employee in this union, you're not going to be on the hook for more than $2,000 in a given year. Actually, 1,000, because you guys are putting in 1,000. But if I'm reading it correctly, that's how the HSA works. So I think those numbers are, might be wrong, or a typo.
I can go back and double-check that.
And I only say that because, and you've heard me talk about this for five years, because in my own plan, I have a 60-40. So we, when we hit that, we, when we hit our, you don't even want to know, we hit our $8,000 family deductible, we end up paying, you know, 40%. Actually, 60. So, anyway, just to comment on that. And I think, I know the waiver being is a big deal. You get rid of the waiver, which you've been doing on all the contracts, but I would just really hope as we get into the next generation of these contracts, that coinsur, that 0% coinsurance can be kind of the next battleground, because I just feel like in the private sector, that's unheard of. It's just really rich. So that's all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evening, all. So I want to talk about what we've talked about before, and that's Section 2.2 on page 3. So that provision says, "All employees within the bargaining unit shall become and remain members of the union or pay service fee allowable by law to the union as a condition of continued employment, not later than 30 calendar days after their date of hire. An agency fee payer may apply to the union for a rebate in accordance with the union's existing procedures." And I think we all agree that that language is presently illegal. Is there any difference of opinion on that? Is there a belief by the board that that language is perhaps legal?
I think the belief that we continue to share with you at each contract, that you bring this up, except for the one that we actually got the Janus language, which unfortunately you weren't here for, was the fact that the, all of our attorneys that have reviewed this, our district attorneys, who we employ and we honor what they do in other districts as well, suggest that this language would then be negated by 18.2 if in fact it is interpreted as illegal.
We're going to, we're going to get to 18.2, but I just want to-
So again, so again, I think that we can get to 18.2, but I think we could probably, we're just talking about the same thing that we talk about, and I know that this is of, an area of focus of yours, and I appreciate that. It's a passion of yours. But really, the answer in going through 18.2 in this, to be very, not to be disrespectful whatsoever, is the response is the same. Our attorneys, who we trust, who represent other districts in some more circumstances, offer them the same advice as we've gotten, that while you're suggesting this is illegal, they believe 18.2 negates that fact, and that's all we could really say. So that's what we go with. That's what we trust in. That's what we pay them for. That's what other districts pay them for. They are the largest educational law firm in the state of Connecticut. So I, you could ask the questions, but that's the response, again respectfully, to you that-
I didn't get a response. The question is whether or not it is the belief of the board that that language is legal. We can go to 18.2 because we're going to get there next. Is there a belief that it's legal?
I think that, again, to answer your question, you know the answer to that question, that it doesn't presently reflect the current statute.
Okay. So, so understanding that, let's go to 18.2. And we're all, we all have familiarity with the English language, so we're going to apply a little reading comprehension. No matter what your lawyers say, the first word in this section is "if." That's a future tense word. You would agree with me. That talks about an event that has not yet happened. It says, "If any section of this agreement shall be," which is another future tense, future tense phrase now. It's an event that has not yet happened. So if, shall be, held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction. You know, I, these bags under my eyes are not because I'm getting old. It's because I spent about seven hours last night reading just about every case that's ever been written about savings clauses. In no case, anywhere in this country, the United States Supreme Court has found that a savings clause has anything to do with something that's already happened. The application of a savings clause says that this entire document is legal. That is how a savings clause is used, and that if, in the future, which is what this language says, something is found to be illegal, then you apply it. So I totally disagree with whatever legal advice you've gotten along these lines, because simple reading comprehension tells me, and every core of this land has told us otherwise. So, once again, I cannot approve illegal language under the auspices of a mask, which essentially this is. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I defer.
Thank you for sharing that.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you.
Isn't any law predicated on future? If I leave here tonight and run somebody over, I'm going to get in trouble. If, I mean, anything, if you're just talking about that argument, and I'm not going to get into it deeply, but the reason I'm taking some objection to your, to your, uh, logic is that you ended it with the declaration that what we're voting on tonight is illegal. That was declarative. You declared it to be illegal, putting eight of your colleagues in a position of voting for something that you've convinced, told the public is illegal. And then does that, I'm not sure if there's an if law about that one, but I mean, you know, lighten up a little bit on that, please. You, you think there's some issues with this, seem to be the only one who thinks that. But to declare it illegal in that way, um, I think is a little unfair to your colleagues. So I would ask you to reconsider your language in the future on similar matters. And if does not necessarily always indicate futuristic. It can just be a, it could be, it can be an acknowledgement of a review of existing conditions and you may find one. Hey, if, oh, if it turns out that he's sitting next to me, ah, look at that, Jason's sitting next to me. Not if next week Jason's sitting next to me. So again, um, sometimes when you get linguistic, you, you might go a little overboard. But anyway, I made my case. Thank you.
Anything from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to add a little bit to that as well, because kind of going off Counselor Testa's comments, I mean, it does, it makes you feel very uncomfortable up here. I'm not a lawyer, I'm a technology guy, so I, I have to sit on the idea of the fact that the board has gone through the trouble to have lawyers look it over. We have a lawyer over here who views it differently and that's the whole premise of our legal system. You've got one side, one argument, other side, other argument. I feel very comfortable supporting this because I've got a clause in here that's been vetted by one series of lawyers that says, if we've got this issue, this makes it invalidated. And I'm comfortable with that because it basically covers me in, in my vote and it covers the board and their decision to write it this way. This way, they've got the coverage that they need by the instruction that they were told. We've seen plenty of cases come and go in the court system where laws are set up one way and people get something thrown out on a technicality, either by basis of evidence or by other law. So I, I feel very comfortable in supporting this, based on the idea that it's been looked over. There's always going to be the other argument, there's always going to be the other side, and, uh, it doesn't dissuade me from doing what I, what I see to be otherwise a very well-put-together agreement. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a proper savings clause here, in my opinion, would say something like, certain portions of this document are illegal. Please check with counsel of your own choosing prior to relying upon any portion of the same. Instead of talking about this if and shall and, you know, future tense stuff, that's pretty straightforward. And I appreciate the work that's in the contract. You know, don't, please, and, you know, you're not the only ones that I talk about this issue with, but I think that would be appropriate language. That's what you're saying, you know? You're real, leaving it on somebody else to determine it. But it's like, you know, the illegal language, which we agree is, is illegal, is on page two, and the savings clause is buried in the document like page 18. And there's no direction for anyone. I can't tell you how many calls I get about this. You know, well, the contract says that I have to be, you know? And I'm like, well, you know, there's a savings clause and, you know, well, how do I know that it applies to that, you know? We're just hiding the ball here. So it's not fair and I appreciate you coming here and the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor. I, I think, you know, there's, there's certainly a, a philosophical issue. However, the reality is the law is in transition due to a recent court decision and we have obligations to negotiate with another party. That other party has certainly the right to seek legal counsel and fashion language they think is appropriate. We're not in a position to demand that language be placed in a contract that's unilateral. There are, there are issues, there are, there's other matters in this contract that need to be settled and to wait for this one issue is contra, certainly from one, at this point, the school board's standpoint, and certainly I agree with them, it's not worth it to hold everything in abeyance and then have to move into mediation or arbitration or whatever over something that will get resolved. No language in the contract is going to, uh, change what constitutional rights people have. You know, that, that just won't happen. It can't happen. So we need time to get through the details on it, but, you know, I don't think it's as severe as legal and illegal. It's a process and it's going to have to be resolved at some point to bring everything in line with constitutional law and state statute. But I think we have time to do that. We also, at this point, can move ahead with a contract that the rest of it serves us and I believe the negotiating party well. So rather than risk having even more problems as a result of arbitration or whatever, that's why we're here.
Questions or comments from the public? I don't have the memo by which, uh, in front of me, by which the council received this, so I don't know what, what timeline you're working on. Is there a date by which it's effective if we take no action?
The Board of Ed approved this, uh, last week. Well, I shouldn't say the Board of Ed doesn't take actions because you did. So the Board of Ed received that the tentative agreement was done prior to that. So we have, um, we're midway through the 30-day period approximately, actually at the beginning, probably the first third.
Okay.
So we're within the timeframe.
Counselor Letourneau.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, um, to accept this agreement between the town of Wallingford, Wallingford Board of Education and the United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 18B, um, which is the Wallingford Computer Techs.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Letourneau.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to you.
Happy holidays to you.
Enjoy the season. On to item six, which is the presentation of certificates to recognize Masonicare, Choate Rosemary Hall, Albrecht and Allnecks for their outstanding contributions to the town of Wallingford 350th Jubilee Committee scheduled for June 20th through 27th, 2020. Good evening and please remind us who you are for the record.
Christina Mansfield.
Bob Devaney. Mayor and council members, uh, thank you again for allowing us to come forward and giving you an update on what's happening with our 350th birthday of Wallingford. And the partnerships that are aligning with our 350 are these four generous folks or businesses that have come forward to, to help us kick off this great celebration.
Bob Parisi, um, we'd like to ask you to come up as part of our steering committee with the mayor and Chairman Servoni to present a certificate to each of our sponsors. And so first, we'd like to call up Masonicare JP Vinoy, who is coming in as our gold sponsor for the Fireworks Show $20,000 sponsorship to the town of Wallingford on behalf of the Wallingford 350th Jubilee.
Certificate of appreciation, Wallingford Jubilee 350, um, certificate is awarded to Masonicare in recognition of valuable contributions to their major jubilee supplier, uh, sponsor. JP, thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to invite up Allison Katie and Brittany Barbero from Choate Rosemary Hall, again a gold sponsor, $20,000 sponsorship to the town of Wallingford's 350th Jubilee We'd like to call up Jay Shay on behalf of Chris Yulberg and Yulberg Stainless Steel for their generous donation to the Wallingford 350th Jubilee Celebration Parade, $20,000
Stand, Jay, thank you. Thank you, Jay.
And we'd like to call up Dee Pryor Nestie, who is executive director of the Quinnipiac Chamber, who is a solicitor for our chamber, uh, and for our Jubilee Celebration and active director, and Frank De Castrino from Allnecks in Ebonox for their $20,000 donation to the Wallingford Jubilee Celebration for Business Day. And so a round of applause for that.
Ladies and gentlemen, in closing, uh, February 6th will be 500 days out for our Jubilee and it's closing in quick. So let's get ready for this great big party. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all of your work. That fundraising is crucial and important to the success of the event, especially this early on. Mayor?
I just think another round of applause for all these fine people and the time and energy they're spending.
All right, with that, there being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.